Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is seven o'clock, so I will call the order this meeting with the Noblesville Common Councils. We can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. O'Connor, would you please leave us this evening?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee's, will you please call the roll? Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Present.
Ms. Lyles?
Present.
Madam President, you have a call. Thank you. We need an approval of the Executive Session Memorandum from August 9, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Executive Session Memorandum. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval of the minutes from our August 9, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from August 9. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Eight zero. Thank you.
Sorry, I was reading.
Approval of the minutes from the August 16, 2022 budget meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you. Now to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move that we amend the agenda to include a confirmatory vote on ordinance number 51-07-22 as the last item under previously discussed ordinances.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to add a confirmatory vote for ordinance 51-07-22 after the other previously discussed ordinances. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you very much. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any of the white slips, but if anyone would like to speak, please fill one of those out and hand it to the clerk. We will move on to council committee reports. I believe the only one that we have is the Finance Committee, so Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. We met August 18. Myself, Greg O'Connor, Darren Peterson, and Aaron Smith. We discussed fiscal action, additional appropriation for outside legal services with Mr. Matt White, and we also talked about a fiscal and debt actions which are on the council meeting agenda tonight, which we'll be going over. It was a very quick meeting, and the claims do come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions to Mr. Davis?
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move approve the claims submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the claims as submitted. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you. Miscellaneous item number one is the council is to hear a report from Nickel Plate Arts and Ms. Ailey McGill. Good evening, Ms. McGill.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me in to give you a little update on the state of the arts here in Noblesville. Pull out the chart or the keyboard. I am the executive director of Nickel Plate Arts, and just as a reminder, we are on contract with the city to help manage the cultural district as well as to provide a vibrant arts hub in downtown. And just to give you some really quick numbers, according to our calculations through Americans for the Arts, the work that we did in 2021 generated more than $517,000 in household income in the region. We supported more than 26 full-time equivalent jobs, and we generated more than $31,000 in income for local municipalities, local governments. We work with over 1,000 artists each year. Last year, we had over almost 11,000 people to our campus, as well as, so both to our campus and to Noble Maid, the little gift shop on the square. We also provided over $58,000 to other organizations last year. And so all of this information is in that arts guide that I just gave you and our annual report. Just to make sure that you're aware of some of our big projects that we've put on, the annual report covers the year of 2021, and so some of the highlights that I'll pull out in there are, we actually piloted an artist exchange program with some of the other cultural districts around the state. There are currently 12 of those, and we have really good relationships with each of them. In the past, we've taken field trips to each of those, to the first 10 cultural districts, and that's something we'd love to do in the future with anyone who'd like to go along with us. We also celebrated our 100th First Friday last year, which I think is kind of cool that in 10 years, we finally reached that 100 mark. And we also became the Indiana Arts Commission Regional Arts Partner for Region 7, which is Marion County and the surrounding counties. So we are currently the group that all the other arts groups in central Indiana come to for help with Indiana Arts Commission grants and for help with connecting with resources. So it's really becoming, Noblesville is a real nexus for the arts in central Indiana. This year as well, I'm excited to say that we've relaunched our second Saturday programs, which is just basically another excuse for people to come downtown and do something each month. We've relaunched our Art of Business programs, which we do in conjunction with the Noblesville Chamber of Commerce and several other organizations. We are heading up some Squirrel Stampede programming because we are officially in the 200th anniversary year of the great Squirrel Stampede in the Midwest, and we're working with the new owners of the Lacy Building on hopefully developing some new artist studio space for downtown. We also hosted the Indiana Arts Commission's On Ramp program this year, which was a huge success and brought almost 40 emerging arts professionals from around the state here for a five-day workshop. Just so you know, this is our pie chart of our income, so we made just over $500,000 last year. The big blue section on the right side of the pie chart is the amount of money that we spent on, or that came from the city of Noblesville. So you can see the city of Noblesville is our largest funder, but you'll also see, I'll come back to that chart in a second, the dark blue slice here are the expenses that we put in directly into programming. That doesn't include the staff time related to running those programs, but you can see, compared to our other communities, the green slices, I think are Fishers on this, or those are fundraising expenses. We soak more energy into Noblesville than we do in any other of our communities. This then shows our labor costs. So on this chart, the big dark brown section are our staff salaries. We currently have four full-time staff, one half-time staff member, and a handful of frontline staff members who help us run Noble Maid. So when you break those staff expenses down, you can see we still have close to half of our work is devoted to administrative-type tasks like running payroll and doing fundraising and things like that, but the blue sections, anything that's a blue shade here, are hours that were devoted to Noblesville projects. So when you combine this portion of our staffing costs with our programming costs, about half of our resources are sunk into the city of Noblesville specifically. To go back to this chart, I also just want to emphasize, the blue side of this is our earned income, and the gold side is our charitable income. For nonprofits, it's often very difficult to find earned income, so the fact that the arts really help make money here in Noblesville is pretty evident, I think even in our financial So just to run you through our charts, these are the numbers we track year after year just to sort of show our progress. In each of these charts, you'll notice the impact of COVID as we go along, but in terms of providing resources to other organizations, that includes things like graphic design support, time that our staff spend going to meetings to help other organizations plan events. Sometimes we even pay for things like musicians during Small Business Saturday, those kinds of things that, it wasn't necessarily our program, but we're paying to support an aspect of it. So for the past two years, we've been hanging steady right at just over $58,000 worth of cash and services provided to other organizations. Our visitation rates have nicely rebounded. We're not quite back to pre-pandemic levels, but we're pretty darn close. So last year, we had almost 11,000 people come to Nickel Plate and Noble Maid together, and you can see that's way up from the year before when we had to spend a big chunk of the year closed due to COVID. Similarly, our art sales are starting to rebound in good ways, so our record year for art sales was 2019 where we sold over $48,000 worth, and last year, we sold 37, and we're well on track to exceed that this year. So I don't think we'll be quite back up to 2019 levels yet, but we're very, very close. And this is really important because our sales help reflect the rest of the creative economy. We have to be able to ensure to patrons that there's a reason to come here to spend money on art, right? And we can clearly show that year after year, we've been building that case, that this is a place to come and support the arts and artists in general. It's also really important to us to get money in the hands of artists to do what they do because it's not always easy for them to find money for their own creative projects. They can get commissioned well in this area, but we want them to be able to explore and expand their careers as well. So in 2021, we spent over $46,000 on artists for projects like playing music at First Fridays, or building trophies for our award ceremony, or putting on classes, all those types of skills that artists have. Another big factor of this year, as the regional arts partner, we have access to new programs and new funding through the state, and one of those sources of funding was through the Central Indiana Small Business Center. They took some of their ARPA funds or their COVID funding and put it into creative businesses in the state. So they shared money with the Indiana Arts Commission, who then passed it through to us to provide these next-level business, creative business trainings that happened right here in City Hall, and we really appreciate the city's generosity in letting us use this space. But we had 30 artists come in and take workshops on topics that ranged from things like fund social media all the way to maybe not so fun, but very important tax law and stuff like that, to, because what artists find over and over again, that whether they're self-taught or they went through school, they often didn't take marketing classes or accounting classes or, you know, any of the kind of business skills that they need. So we're able to bring those forward for them, and this serves as a reboot of this Art of Business program that we started with the chamber, so that hopefully year after year, we'll be able to provide a couple of different trainings throughout the year for the artists who are, you know, small business owners in our community. Another huge success this year was our Maker Fair slash Juneteenth program. It took place on June 18, and it happens in conjunction with the St. Michael's Strawberry Festival. They were really generous to let us share the square with them for several years, and my impression is that they feel that we help expand their event and give their visitors other things to do. This was by far a record year. On June 18, we had over 70 vendors out on the square, and we had to even close Logan Street to provide enough room for them. We activated all three of the alleys around the square as well, so we had activities in each of those. We know it's very difficult to count, especially when we're running our own booth during that event, but we know that there were over 3,000 attendees to that event. And we did some surveys of the artists, and it looks like the average artist made about $500 at their booth. This is an event that's really geared towards first-time vendors. It's not a Penrod experience, it's much more of an emerging artist kind of experience. And they each had an average of 18 transactions at that, which I think is interesting. That just gives us a baseline to compare year over year. It also included a Juneteenth celebration with which we worked with four other community groups and cultural organizations on planning that, and they were able to provide a reading of the Emancipation Proclamation. Even Frederick Douglass came, he came back to Noblesville just for this event, that's really nice, and we had interactive music as part of that as well. I bring that up because in the future, we can't use the name Maker Fair because there's a trademark on it. So we want, we're going to start rebranding this event to focus more on sort of the community-wide creativity that's part of this event and to highlight some of the cultural features that'll be a part of it as well. We just want it to be really, really inclusive and a great celebration of downtown. So stay tuned for what that branding ends up being. We are also looking forward to a signature event coming up this fall called Dia de Muertos. We are working again with some cultural leaders to help anchor this event. We currently have five artists sign up, and we think we'll have a few more, each of whom have a direct connection to the Mexican community. We expect around 200 guests because November 1, I think, is it Tuesday this year, which isn't like the greatest day of the week for a program, but we think it's important to keep the event on the traditional holiday. And we're doing this in collaboration with Noblesville Diversity Coalition and the schools because they, the schools in particular, see a lot of interest in this programming. So we're happy that we get to be the ones to provide it. We also are going to be working with the Chamber and Main Street on Small Business Saturday coming up this year, too. Last year, we collaborated together and did a lot of, we sort of added an extra layer to downtown on Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. It's a great opportunity to highlight small businesses of all kinds, both in downtown and other parts of the city, so that's why our three organizations really want to come together on this. But we know that holiday celebrations in Noblesville aren't just restricted to that one day, so you'll continue to see promotions through us, through our cultural district work that go all the way through January 8 and include things like the ice rink and other great features of downtown. I want to bring your attention to a project that we think is brewing here in town, and that is an ongoing conversation about performing arts in Noblesville. I bring this up because in the past three weeks, I've been contacted by several new theater groups that have been looking at this area, and so I start to see a potential project forming. There are at least 12 groups that are currently operating as theater groups in the Noblesville area, and I have a list of them on the next slide. There are also a lot of musical groups that I, like, I can't even begin counting them. But there's only one public professional performing arts space, and that's the brand-new Brick Room in the building just on Maple Street, just across the road, and it's very small, it can hold maybe like 40 people. I've been hearing a lot of ideas for other private projects that could help address this need, but there's clearly a need in this community for performing arts space. All of these organizations are floating from home to home, and we know that the Fishers Art Center is going to include performing arts space, and it will come online in 2024, but there's no way that it's going to meet the full need of what, like, this side of the county would like to see from performing arts. So this is a list of the groups that we could count quickly that have active projects, and a couple of them that I want to bring your attention to. In addition to the Brick Room, which is a great new for-profit venue here, there's also, Poet 8 Productions is putting on a production of our town, the play, in the South Alley, again because they couldn't find indoor space, but it's going to be such a neat use of that alleyway that we've activated, that we wanted to see this kind of creativity happening in. So that's going to be happening in the end of September and early October, and it's going to include a lot of just sort of regular community members as performers in that piece, which is going to be a great celebration, I think, of our local community. But you can see, like, this is an impressive list. There are several groups on there that currently perform in Indianapolis, but that have projects that could come up this way as well if we were interested, including Onyx Fest, which is focused on African-American and Black playwrights, and Bard Fest, which is all about Shakespeare. So Nickel Plate Arts would like to take the lead on sort of a study of this project, of this situation in town, what we need, what would best serve this community. That would include a study of the economic impact of, you know, finding a home for performing arts in downtown Noblesville, and we would just ask that the city be a partner in that exploratory process with us. We also would want to keep all of those existing groups, as well as potentially new ones coming to the area, involved in that process as well, so that it's shared and fully collaborative and hopefully can meet everybody's needs. Another thing that we have continued to work on and really want to make a focus for next year is increasing collaboration and impact in downtown among organizations that have similar footprints. So Noblesville Main Street, Nickel Plate Arts, and the Chamber of Commerce, we all serve small businesses. We all know how important the creative economy and the downtown economy are to our community, so we are continuing to look for ways to sort of eliminate duplication of effort and maximize our skill sets. Bob Dubois and Kate Baker, both are incredibly talented people, and we all have lots that we can provide this community, so we would like to find ways to, you know, not all be doing filing our taxes at the same time or whatever. So we are continuing to look for ways to share, like, back-of-house staff, and that could, I think, turn into a really innovative model that would be unique to Noblesville down the road. So I just want you to be aware that that's an ongoing conversation. It's always good to remind everybody of our mission, right? So So our mission is to cultivate arts resources and enrich the lives of those who experience our community. And currently we're defining our community as the Noblesville and surrounding areas, um, reaching as far as the Indianapolis region through our regional arts partnership. You may remember at my presentation last year, I talked about the impact of the Ready Grant Project on our future. And through no one's fault, at least no one in this room, uh, the Ready Grant, uh, structure really changed and is no longer a viable path for us at this time. But all the work and the planning was done on that, so that's something that we continue to keep, um, kind of on the back burner for just the right opportunity when it comes forward. But there are several other things that sort of were sparked through that conversation that we're going to continue to focus on, one of them being the Lacy Building Project and one of them hopefully being, um, certainly a study of our brand, if not a full rebrand. Um, the term, the words nickel plate have become, uh, ubiquitous for lots of things in this region. Um, and so we want to look at how we can really communicate our, our focus on, um, the creative economy a little bit more in our branding in the future. Um, so, and, uh, we're really looking forward to working with the Lacy Building, continuing to work with theater groups to just continue to grow the economy that we have, the creative economy we have here. I want to invite you all to our annual gala, which is on September 21st, at which we'll be celebrating, I think, 24 nominees for Nickel Plate Arts Awards. Folks who have taken on new creative ventures, folks who have been real leaders in the arts, both, um, development wise and, um, artistically in this community. It is our 10th anniversary and Smith's Jewelers is, um, providing a fantastic opportunity to win a diamond worth over $5,000. So, um, yeah, it's, it is, uh, going to be a unique, um, experience for sure, for somebody who's there that evening, um, will walk home with a diamond. Uh, and of course we have lots more. You can check out our website. Does anybody have any questions? Anything else you'd like to know?
Any questions?
We really appreciate your continued support in, uh, making sure that the arts are driving economic development in downtown.
Thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
We'll move on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 44-07-22 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the Downtown Development Fund for the East Alley Gateway Arch. Mr. Spalding.
Madam President, Members of the Council, Jeff Spalding, CFO, and this ordinance before you, second reading, so you've had it, uh, discussed previously, pretty simple and straightforward. And the, uh, concept here is taking unspent balances in the Downtown Development Fund, uh, that were not used in prior years, appropriating them now to, uh, do some improvement work on the East Alley Gateway. Now, be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions of Mr. Spalding? We need to open the public hearing for ordinance number 44-07-22.
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I would move to close the public hearing on ordinance 44-07-22.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for ordinance 44-07-22. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero.
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve ordinance 44-07-22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 44-07-22 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Please.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Ms. Wildes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number 52-08-22 and ordinance amending ordinance number 52-12-19 and section 34.08 of the city's code of ordinances concerning fees for Riverside Cemetery. Ms. Lee.
Good evening. Uh, this is second reading for, uh, uh, this ordinance, which increases the fees at Riverside Cemetery and will, even with the increases, will still remain some of the lowest fees in the area. But, uh, as we discussed at the last meeting, it's, it's an appropriate time to do this. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Lee?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve ordinance 52-08-22 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 52-08-22 as presented. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Ms. Wildes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is approved.
We will now move to ordinance number 51-07-22 to, for a confirmatory vote for this ordinance. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Madam President and Members of the Council. Also thank you for indulging this, uh, late addition to your agenda. Um, there's a peculiarity with these types of annexation ordinances, uh, where the, the landowner or the, the property, um, the attorney for the, this project has indicated he'd like to have a confirmatory vote on the basis that we have a 14-day cooling off period after our public hearing. We had the public hearing at the last meeting, so we just need to have a vote. We, this has been approved, just asked for your vote tonight to adopt the annexation ordinance, so our minutes are clear, um, that we adopted it and the timeline provided in the statute. I can answer any questions you have, nothing's changed. Just asking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move that we approve ordinance number 51-07-22, a confirmatory resolution as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve or do a confirmatory vote of ordinance 51-07-22. This is a roll call vote. Please.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Ayer.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Ms. Wildes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is confirmed.
Thank you. We will now move on to a proposed development presentation. Council to hear an introductory information for a proposed residential project consisting of 21 single-family lots on approximately 8.79 acres adjacent to the intersection of East 161st Street and Hazel Dell Road to be known as Maple Grove. Good evening. Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Council. My name is Matt Price. I'm an attorney at the Denton's Law Firm in Indianapolis, Indiana, and, uh, here, here tonight on behalf of AMH Development. Please, uh, forgive me at the outset that my client, Mark Connor, who is a resident actually of Noblesville, uh, lives in Lake Forest subdivision, uh, not far away actually from this project, actually, or just across Hazel Dell Parkway. He is at a hearing tonight on another proposal, uh, in a community near, uh, near here and expresses his regrets for not being able to attend, but hopefully as we work through this process, we'll get to meet Mark, uh, who's really the face of the company. But I'm going to be, uh, speaking on the company's behalf and representing, uh, his interests and the company's interests in this project. And thank you also to, uh, the, uh, technical support tonight. Uh, we've got the presentation up on the screen. Talk to you just a little bit about the, uh, the company. Uh, the company was formed fairly recently back in 2017. It's a sister company of American Homes for Rent, which is, has been, uh, in the, uh, single-family residential rental business for a number of years. Uh, since the company's, uh, foundation in 2017, it's today the 41st largest, uh, home builder, uh, in the United States. Uh, it's a well-recognized, uh, company, publicly traded, uh, and, uh, has been, has received numerous awards. Uh, the management team for, uh, its local interests are all, uh, right here locally in Indianapolis. So the property management function, the maintenance function, the leasing function are all right here, uh, in the Indianapolis area. And as I mentioned, Mark lives right here in Noblesville. Uh, across the country, uh, they own, uh, collectively, uh, 55,000 properties in, uh, 22 markets and have a collective customer satisfaction score of, of over 85%. That's even higher for, uh, homes where they are the, uh, the builder, uh, as well as the, uh, the landlord, as opposed to homes that they just purchased and, and rented. Oops. I want to tell you a little bit about who makes up our, uh, our residents. In broad categories, they come from three, uh, pools. Uh, this marries up, I think, very well with the community's, uh, housing study from back in 2016, uh, which was very prescient in a number of ways. And what, um, what, uh, AMH is experiencing is that they get residents from, uh, uh, employees who are relocating, taking a new position in a community and are looking for, uh, housing, uh, for empty nesters who are seeking to, uh, downsize, maybe move away from a home where they have, uh, their equity actually in the home and be able to take that equity out and rent in a new location while preserving their ability to live in a suburban, uh, neighborhood. And then also, uh, those, uh, renters that simply are not in the market to purchase. It's their desire to rent by choice, uh, if you will. And each one of those pools make up, uh, the significant majority of, of renters that, that come to one of our communities. This, the, the proposal in question, uh, again, we call it Maple Grove and it's, uh, at the northeast quadrant of Hazel Dell Parkway and 161st Street. Uh, on the future land use map, it's shown as, uh, infill, uh, residential. There's been some proposals in the past that have, uh, have, have been, uh, presented for this land and have not received a favorable final, uh, vote. Uh, and so it's remained, uh, undeveloped up to this point and we think this new, uh, concept, uh, fits in very well. This shows the, uh, the existing zoning and surrounding, uh, properties. It's zoned R1, uh, today. Uh, the, uh, Lake Forest subdivision is what you see in the northwest corner. That's where Mark lives. In the southeast corner is, uh, Twin Oaks subdivision. Uh, we're proposing 21 single-family homes. Uh, we have gone through TAC, uh, up to this point. We've not been through any ARB review. Uh, one of the main comments received during TAC, and I want to be, uh, very upfront with that, is to eliminate the access point that is currently shown onto Hazel Dell Parkway. So we're working through what that means and, and, uh, where the access point would be off 161st Street exactly, but that's something we'll certainly work with the city on to, uh, to accommodate that request. Uh, the homes are designed to have, uh, varying lot widths from, uh, around 65 feet, uh, to 70 feet. Uh, and our, our intention is, as we work through ARB, is to comply with all of the architectural, uh, standards for the community. This shows a conceptual layout, kind of its orientation, uh, along, uh, 161st Street and Hazel Dell. Uh, a couple of things I'll point out is, uh, the area kind of in the western section that's green, that's a detention, uh, will be a detention pond, the way the property, uh, drains. There's a very large, uh, buffered area on the east side of the property, uh, that, uh, that's shaded in, uh, in green. And the properties, uh, I'm sure you're familiar with the area, but one of the distinctive, distinctive features of the subdivisions, uh, Lake Forest and, uh, uh, Twin Oaks is that each of them have significant landscaping and buffering, uh, along the roadway. And our plan would be to match that so that there's, uh, that's, that like, uh, buffering, uh, to, uh, to soften and, uh, screen the, uh, homes from the adjoining roadways. Talk to you a little bit about who the folks are that, that seek out, uh, an American home. Uh, median household income is, uh, 122,000 and very high occupancy rate. Uh, we have a minimum one-year lease requirement, although our residents typically stay for longer periods of time. Uh, we like to provide a high-quality residential experience, so that means high-quality amenities and architecture. Uh, we have an on-call, uh, 24-hour-a-day local maintenance, uh, crew. Uh, talk to you a little bit about what that means for one of our homes. Uh, we sod the entire yard, uh, upon delivery. Uh, it's irrigated and the lawn is all mowed, uh, and that's all done by our, our maintenance team. So it's, it's not, it's a, it's low maintenance, uh, obviously provide maintenance on the home, uh, itself. We also have a comprehensive set of, uh, uh, covenants, conditions and restrictions, much like you would see for a traditional, uh, owner-occupied, single-family development, uh, to, to preserve the value of the asset. Uh, one of the great advantages about having a, um, a master-managed and maintained community like this is that we have the single owner to enforce those covenants, uh, to ensure, uh, that all of our residents have a, uh, first-class, uh, residential experience and help, uh, eliminate, uh, some of the things you see with, uh, individual kind of one-off rental properties that, uh, from time to time are sprinkled in, uh, existing developments. Uh, because of Indiana's property tax structure, these, uh, homes will pay, uh, property taxes, uh, at the 2% cap as opposed to the 1%, because they're, uh, they're for rent, which is another, uh, economic advantage, uh, to the, to the city. And we estimate that the retail value of each home will be, uh, just over $400,000. As I mentioned, maintained 100% of the time, uh, no vinyl. Uh, we include as far, part of our finishes, stainless steel appliances, uh, LDP flooring, finished garages, granite countertops. I mentioned the 2% already.
Yeah.
Uh, and obviously the single owner helps, uh, uh, stabilize property values, you know, as the economy goes through cyclical changes. This gives you some idea of our, uh, of, of the architectural, uh, uh, aspects of the homes. Again, we've not received any ARB feedback up to this point. We have, uh, received some, uh, staff-level comments, particularly relating to the rear facades of the homes and, uh, providing some architectural enhancements in the rears that we are, we are working to incorporate those comments, uh, as, as, uh, and, and will continue to do so as we receive, uh, more feedback. I've included front, front facade elevations just as an example. Just to, uh, to kind of wrap up, uh, one of the, one of the main elements of a American home for rent is to provide, uh, residences where those who wish to age in the community can, uh, have an alternative, uh, housing option. Uh, the property tax contribution is, is at the 2% level. We have high-quality, consistently maintained homes that provide, uh, exceptional value to the community. Then lastly, just to give you a little bit of a, a flavor for the size of the homes, uh, we anticipate that the homes will be between 1,800 square feet and 2,700 square feet. And, uh, we anticipate a rental range of, uh, between 2,000 and 2,500 per month. I should add too, that, uh, the company is not, uh, the, the rental side of the, uh, existing home business is not a stranger to Noblesville. We own, uh, 254, uh, existing homes in Noblesville today. Uh, and those homes, uh, have a, an average rental of, uh, just over $1,700 per month. Those are typically older, uh, homes that are, uh, kind of, as I meant, I use the word sprinkle, that are kind of peer in, in existing neighborhoods as opposed to neighborhoods that were built with, uh, the rental concept kind of first and foremost like, uh, like this would be planned. That's my presentation on Maple Grove and, uh, very much appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present this evening and welcome, uh, your feedback. Thank you.
Do we want to go ahead and hear the presentation on the next project as well? And then that way, then you can have comments or anything else.
Madam President, I'd be happy to do that. That's the council's will. I certainly see nods, I'm happy to do that.
Sure. Oh. I need to read that we're going to hear an introductory information for a proposed residential project consisting of 147 single-family lots on approximately 52 acres on the west side of Promise Road adjacent to 196th Street to be known as Promise Road. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President, Members of the Council. I will, uh, advance forward to the more specific acts, but, aspects of the, uh, the land use proposal itself. So this is the, uh, future land. So this is the future land use map for the area in question. This area is actually not in incorporated Noblesville, so it is, it would need to be annexed, but in the future land use map, it is identified as being for future residential development. This gives you an idea of what's surrounding it. It's a larger parcel, approximately 52 acres, kind of going around the horn. The property on the west, or the development on the west, is the Meadows, and the properties that immediately join on the west is called the Meadows Knoll. Meadows, as you know, is a kind of an expansive development, which has different sections in it. The property on the south and kind of wrapping around to the southeast is Route Bush Woods. So that's the property that's surrounded, that is developed. Just north of 196th Street, you'll see that checkered area, which is delineated as R3 PD. That property today is, at least portions of it, look to be like a horse farm or a pony farm. It's actually, 20 acres of it, I think, is actually for sale right now, but that's the property immediately across Promise Road to the kind of northeast. This gives you an idea of our preliminary development proposal for this property. It is more units at 147 total home sites, and includes, as you can see, kind of in the central eastern portion of it, an amenity center. So it'd be a community center together with a swimming pool, and then at various sections of the project, in the northeast, northwest, and southwest, would be individual kind of pocket parks. The precise amenity has not been defined yet. That's something that we anticipated working through as we received feedback and as we worked through the process. And again, it's the, we've proposed the same home elevations for each floor plan. We have three separate elevations, and I've identified or brought with me three of those tonight, which are all named after United States Presidents. I left out the Addams Collection, although it's very nice and it's in your packet. The same attributes as far as the paying the 2% taxes, these are larger lot sizes, I should mention. The minimum front, the minimum lot width is 70 feet, so it essentially matches the lot width of the homes to the west and to the south and east as far as lot sizes, and that was done purposefully to match the land use pattern in the area. That's the second proposal. Would welcome your comments and appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. Thank you.
You have any comments, Mr. Ayer?
Yes, my comments don't necessarily have to do with any critique of your project. They more have to do with where I feel the community is today on our rental market. We've approved 3,880 lots for either single-family rentals, townhome rentals, duplex rentals, or multi-family rentals in the last, I believe, in the last 18 months. I didn't get the exact dates of when this started. With that, we've got a lot of growing pain to go through, and not all of those have been approved. Some of them are in the pipeline, but the majority, and we've seen two projects, I believe, like what you're looking at. They total somewhere roughly 400 lots, 400 homes. My concern is our infrastructure and naturally just absorbing a little bit of what we've already approved. You know, the economy right now is a little different than what it has been the last few years. That could be good for the rental market. We may have a need for more. I don't know, but I just have concern with what we've already approved and where we're at on our growth.
Other comments?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Boyce.
I have to agree with Mr. Ayer. That's just the number that are in the pipeline right now. We also have a number of them that are approved that have kind of fallen by the wayside but could easily pick back up. So we've got a lot of rental stuff. We've got a lot of coming, and I would just have to echo what Mr. Ayer said, that I think we've got to kind of slow back for a little bit on the residential, especially the rental residential, to try and make sure our infrastructure can handle it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 53-08-22, an ordinance approving additional appropriations in the general fund for outside legal services and establishing a public hearing.
Moved and introduced.
Second.
Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Madam President, members of the council, again, Jeff Spalding, CFO, and what this ordinance represents is fairly well described. You know, the city has an array of legal services costs that it encounters from year to year. We establish a budget for those costs, but sometimes they are a bit unpredictable. Circumstances change from time to time, and as a consequence for 2022, we need to increase our funding for outside legal services. And what this action represents, it's one part of a two-part approach where we'll be coming to the council with some transfers of existingly appropriated funds. At the next council meeting, we'll put those together, and all of these actions together will provide the additional funding that's being requested for legal services in 2022. But this is part one, and this is appropriating unobligated balances, cash balances in the general fund that would be paired with that other thing. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Spalding?
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move that we establish a public hearing for ordinance number 53-08-22 at our next regular meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 53-08-22 at our next regularly scheduled meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance number 54-08-22, an ordinance annexing approximately 18.4 acres north of East 191st Street and west of Little Chicago Road, known as Red Fox Point Plan Development in Noblesville Township, and establishing a public hearing.
Moved and introduced.
Second.
Ms. Hilton.
Good evening. This is basically an introduction to an ordinance to annex in approximately 18 and 1/2 acres. It is for the PD that was known, that has already been adopted by the Plan Commission and the council earlier this year. It will house 44 single-family lots, and this is basically the first step in that process. We would also ask that you set a public hearing for your next meeting, and at that point, we will have the resolution, fiscal analysis, resolution before you at your next meeting.
Questions of Ms. Hilton.
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move we establish a public hearing for ordinance 54-08-22 at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance.
Before we move up there, a quick question.
Yep, sorry, Mr. Boyce.
No, no problem at all. So just by annexing this or doing the public hearing does not do anything toward approval of the project or anything like that, correct?
Okay. Red Fox Point has already been approved by the Plan Commission and the council.
Okay.
So it will be, like I said, for 44 single-family lots.
Okay.
And this is the age-restricted community that's north of 191st Street.
Got it. Thank you, yes.
So it has been moved and seconded to establish the public hearing for ordinance 54-08-22 at our next regularly scheduled meetings. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. Does anyone have any comments that they would care to share this evening?
Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Ayer.
There's a lot going on this weekend. If you can't find something to do, most of it's free. We have the Logan Street party on the porch or play on the porch or.
Front porch.
Front porch festival.
Front porch music festival.
And Darren's welcoming everybody to his house today. Someone by Saturday night.
Back doors shut down the other day.
Runs from 2 to 5, 2 to 6. Is that right?
That's correct. 2 to 6:30.
2 to 6:30. So come by, listen to some free music. I've got 13 different groups, and they'll be on several different porches. And then we have the concert series in Federal Hill that evening starts at 7 o'clock.
Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market Saturday morning, so you should have plenty to do on Saturday to keep you and your children busy.
And at the front porch music festival, some of our local businesses and restaurants will be having food and beverages available for burgers, so you can come out and just spend the whole day on Logan Street and listen to some great music. For sure. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.